Thank you everyone for joining the South Fulton Coalition. Tonight, we will be featuring Michael Johnson. Mr. Johnson, he's actually running for the District Four Council seat currently occupied by J.C. Sebastian. Tonight, we will be hearing from Michael Johnson's vision for the city of South Fulton, as well as what he hopes to accomplish in his term if he's elected for the District Four seat. So tonight, we have some ground rules and those ground rules are very simple. No attacking the candidate, the candidate, we ask you not to attack your opponents, which is the same thing we tell all of the opponents, I'm sorry, all of our guests here at the South Fulton Coalition as well. Everybody is on mute so that we can have an uninterrupted conversation. If you would like to ask a question to the candidate, please use the reaction button and raise your hand. Once I see that, I will wait for him to finish his comment and then I will acknowledge you so that you can have the floor. So if there's, without any further ado, Mr. Johnson, we're gonna start this one off a little bit differently. Normally, what we do is we ask you to go over your opening remarks and talk a little bit about your campaign. But what we would like to do tonight is tell us what you know about the charter and tell us what you know about this particular possession that you are running for.
Okay. What I know about the charter, I know it's been changed probably four to five times within the last four or five years. I mean, I think the charter has been changed too many times within the eight-year period that we've been a city. I know that the city is governed by the charter. I know that we are, our charter states that our government is set up on a city manager government style. I know our charter states that more like a weak mayor type system. What was the other, what was the other question that you added in there?
No, I just wanted you to talk about what you know about the charter. Now, I did have a follow-up question because I know that's kind of a vague question. So with regard to the charter, what are some things that you would like to see changed in the charter? What are some things that you would like to see reinstated back in our charter?
One of the things I probably would love to see changed in the charter is giving the mayor more strength, more teeth, giving the council. Let me expound a little bit here, like we got a situation going on with our public safety right now. We got a police chief that's been, I'm gonna use the term allegedly abused his authority, abused his power with some of the lower ranking officers. In my personal opinion, our city manager probably could have or should have done something already to rein in this police chief and the way he has treated some of the lower ranking officers. But with the way our charter is set up, the council and mayor, they don't get into operations. They are policymakers. I think it needs to be more teeth. I mean, I respect what they've done here recently by putting them on leave while a real investigation takes place. I truly support that. If our own council, I would have voted for that, I would have made the motion to do that. That's one thing I would like to see changed, but at least, you know, critiqued or strengthened. You know, that's, that's, that's my take on it because I think public safety is very important. I think the men and women in uniform, I'm talking about the lower ranking officers. I think those guys, they gotta be respected, they gotta be respected by the public, by the community, but they also gotta be respected by the chief, they gotta be respected by their superiors. And if them guys come into work, working in a hostile work environment, they can't perform well. Nobody wants to come to work dealing with a lot of unnecessary foolishness. And from what I've been hearing, from what I'm very privileged to, there's a lot of that been going on. And if, if our city manager will not, for whatever the reason may be, hold him accountable, hold him directly accountable, then I think city council and the mayor need to be able to step in and do what needs to be done for the sake of the city, public safety and the community.
Now, do you believe the police chief and the fire chief, do you think that they should report directly to mayor and council or should, or should they still remain aligned to the city manager? Under the, under the control of the city manager?
That's a good question. From what I'm seeing right now, I think the police chief and fire chief, I think they should have some accountability to the city council and the mayor. And that being said, one person having the authority to do something and they don't do it, it puts us in the situation we in right now. It puts us in a very, very compromising situation where people have got to make uncomfortable choices. Now, sometimes uncomfortable choices gotta be made, but if it lied within the council and the mayor, it would entail more people involved, it would put more teeth at it and it would kinda ensure a real checking balance. It would give our men and women in uniform, it would give our men and women in uniform, it would give them, it would give them a voice, it would give them a open door, a more of an open door policy. Because right now, our men and women in uniform, they out here working, putting on them uniform, working the beat out here. They don't have a voice, they don't have a real open door policy. If they have an issue with someone in the department right now, that happen to be related to someone else, that happen to be buddies with someone else, they do not have a real voice and I don't think that's right. They need a real voice, they need to be able to bring it to a board, a council, a mayor and present the facts and let more than one set of eyes look at this to make an informed decision, what I call a consensus.
All right, thank you for that. Now, earlier you mentioned that you would like to, if you were, one of the things that you would like to see is the mayor have more authority under our charter. So would you be, would you be more in favor of us having a strong mayor? Do you think that would be beneficial for our city or should we keep the current balance of power?
I do not think we should keep the current balance of power. I think we should have a more of a strong mayor charter written where the mayor has more strength. I do believe in that. And the reason I support that is because even with a strong mayor, he still gotta rely on city council vote to do a lot of stuff, but I do support that. I think we should have more of a strong mayor type of government, yes.
All right, thank you for that. Now, I see that we had some people recently join, so if you would like to ask our guest tonight, Mr. Michael Johnson, the question, please use the reaction button, raise your hand and I will take you off of mute and I will acknowledge you. Now, Mr. Johnson, while we wait for questions for the public, recently, we ran into the situation with the millage rate cap. How did you find out about the millage rate cap and then what were your thoughts on the millage rate cap? Should it have been raised, should it have not been touched, should it have been removed? What were your thoughts on that? How would you have voted if you were on council?
Okay, I heard about the millage rate cap just from being connected to the community and keeping my ear to what's going on in, in my area and in my city. Whether it was via social media or just other residents talking about it, it became a buzz real fast, real quick. My take on the millage rate cap, I think the millage rate cap need to stay in place. I do not believe the millage rate cap should be removed. There need to be a checking balance. As far as the millage rate cap goes, I would have voted to keep the millage rate cap just as it is at thirteen point one percent. As far as all the hype about the millage rate cap, I, I do believe that it's the current council that's sitting right now. Even the councilman that represent the district that I'm running for, I believe each, each of those guys would have voted to remove the millage rate cap if not for public pressure. That's what I personally believe. None of the citizens wanted it, none of the citizens was consulted. None, I have not spoken to not one single citizen that thought removing the millage rate cap was a good idea. Now, we do all think we need public facilities, we need to find another way to do it, not by raising the millage rate cap, it's just that simple. As long as we as taxpayers in this city, I think we have say-so into how our tax dollars are spent and how our tax dollars are being raised or lowered. I think we have say-so. When we get people that sit on a city council of any other type of government that stop considering the people, I think that's when we get a problem. I heard one city council, one city council person say they had a right to do this, they had a right to do this, they had a right to do that. Now, thank everyone sitting up into, in the church. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you have background noise?
Yes, we have some type of interruption.
All right. I'm gonna mute everybody in one moment. And then I am going to unmute you. All right, I'm sorry about that. You're, you're on mute, please unmute yourself.
All right, can you hear me now?
Here you perfect.
Okay, so as I was saying, yeah. As long as taxpayers of, taxpayers should be part of the conversation every step of the way. Everything I heard in that meeting from, I think it's our financial advisor, Ed Wall, speaking about how much of a problem it would have been for the council to bring it back to the public to vote and how much of a problem or how much of a house it would have been to continue. I think that that's a big problem. They should have to consult with the citizen every single step of the way whenever they make a decisions concerning our money. If I was sitting on council, I think I need to be held accountable too when it come down to spending taxpayers' money. Just because you have a right to do something don't mean that it's right to do it. You also have a right to be accountable and, and hold yourself accountable to every single taxpayer that voted for each individual that sits on that council.
Thank you so much for that. Now, we have a hand raise from Yashena Colbert Bradford. If you, you have the floor, please unmute your mic.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Thank you for recognizing me. I just have two, a couple of questions for the candidate. One is, what do you feel, how do you feel about the city having so many lawsuits against them, the city of South Fulton? That's the first one. And then the second question is, what are the things that you like about your councilman? Who you're running against, your opponent J.C. Sebastian, and what don't you like about him?
Okay, Ms. Bradford, I'm gonna take the first question. The first question is about lawsuits and the question is, how do I feel about the lawsuit that the city is facing right now? Did I hear that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. I think it's, my take on the lawsuits right now that we have against the city, I think is unnecessary. I think I commend the people who setting up for their rights and having to sue the city for, for their rights to be heard. I do not think there are frivolous lawsuits, I do not, I take them very serious. I don't know all the intricate details of those lawsuits. I think it's a bad look for the city that we have allowed ourselves to get here. You know, I think someone should have done something a whole lot sooner than this to eliminate the lawsuits. And if we have a different type of government setup, we could have. If someone had a rein in this, this out of control public safety top of the food chain, maybe we wouldn't be here. Maybe we wouldn't be here, that's, that's the fact. I know some people don't want to hear that, but these complaints went on long enough for someone to respond and do something about it. And if we got people that we have appointed and the city manager spot is, is a pointed spot, it's not an elected spot. The police chief, he was appointed, he was not elected to that particular spot. So I think there should have been some teeth into that, someone should have looked more into that. My take on that is these officer, they fight the, they fight this, the crime, they, 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 when they out here working every day, their work carries a lot of weight. When they testify against different offenders out here in the street, or different offenders out here, that's, they were, they're given a lot of weight, a lot of credibility. But what's strange to me is when these same officers make complaints against, against a superior officer within their own department, people within the city do not give them the same weight and credit that they give them everywhere else. I think that's a problem. I think we need to look at every situation and look at it with, you, you need to give it the same way. You know, if, if they're credible in this situation, they should be credible in this situation. It's just that simple and we wouldn't be here. If we had a real open door policy, I mean, we, we, we got a problem with nepotism, you know, and I'm all for family, hiring family and friends, I'm all for that. But when you got the top two spots within a city of a hundred and fifteen thousand people, you can't run a city like this here like a mom and pop, you know, it, it just can't be, you know. I got family members that had retired from being high ranking law enforcement. They took a look at this and they was appalled, they couldn't believe it. They couldn't believe that a city manager allow a police chief to hire his cousin that attempted to hire his son and his daughter from another department. We look like a laughing stock over here by allowing this to continue. So the lawsuits we got, I think they're horrible. Ms. Bradford, if I heard you correctly, you asked me the second question was, what do I like about the candidate I'm running against, Mr. J.C. Sebastian? I think he's a pleasant guy, I, I don't know him, know him, I don't claim to know him, but we have attended some classes together. All of us attended classes through the zoning and the, me, him, the entire board. We all attended classes here early in the year for zoning and variances. And I had a chance to talk with him a little bit, I've seen him even during the debates. I saw him at the last debate, we, forum, the forum. And we've always had mutual respect for one another, always greeted one another with utmost respect. So I have nothing, but I will say this, one thing, you asked what I don't like about him. I think he could be more forceful, I think he could be more, I'm gonna try to say this on a very respectable way, from what I've seen, since he been on council, I've seen a particular bully on council kinda dictate his decision-making a lot. I've seen a particular bully on council co-influence his decision-making, is, is not community-driven. I, I think he could probably be more visible. I think he could probably, a lot of the residents I've spoken with throughout all the communities in District Four, they're telling me that they never see it, they never know what's going on. They only see, they telling me now, I'm not on his news level listening, but they telling me now that they sent a whole lot of news that all of a sudden start coming out during this election cycle that they never seen before. They think a lot of stuff that's going on is just the trinkets, it's for show, so. But I can't attack him, it's, I'm gonna respect what the moderator spoke of because I can't attack him like that. I just think he could be more inclusive as far as District Four is concerned. I just think, you know, he could be more inclusive. I think, I think, they're just my thoughts on that. And as far as keeping our area green, you know, I hear District Four, the property that I live on is a smaller ranch over here with several, several acres, it's zone AG one, I like to keep it AG one, I support AG one. Everything about me is AG one. And if the residents say they want something, I think the residents should get it, the residents should be put first. Every decision being made in this district should be citizen and resident-driven. Never should it be about a I or, or me doing something because another council member has intimidated me or sit there and work strings and work me like a puppet. That's basically what I'm getting at. That's the downfall that I see he could be stronger at.
Thank you so much for that, thank you so much for that question. Our next question comes from Pamela Harvey, you have the floor, please unmute your mic.
Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Stelling. Mr. Johnson, can you tell me a little about yourself? And how long have you been into city politics and what made you decide to run?
Okay, to tell you a little bit about myself, I raised my family here in South Fulton. For the, me and my wife, I've been married about twenty-six years. I mean, we, we own, we own multiple properties here in South Fulton. I was HOA president over in another district here back in two thousand six when we first started talking about becoming a city. I attended several meetings with all the legislators from the Gold Dome down at the conference center here in College Park and throughout the city back then. I was part of the city when they eventually voted to be a city. Like I said, HOA president during that time in a different community. I've raised my entire family here and you asked me about, Ms. Harvey, you asked me about what made me decide to get into politics, local politics. Well, I can tell you this, I currently serve on the board right now, the ZBA Zoning Board of Appeals. Right now, I'm a current member of that particular board. So it, it ain't like I just say, I wanna get up in just roughly City Council. I contemplated it for quite a while. I'm a builder, I'm a superintendent with a, one of the most premier general contractors here in the city, in the city of Atlanta. I, I traveled a lot early on. My type of superintendent role took me from state to state, city to city. And I did not have the time to put into this because I constantly travel with young kids. Well, with two kids in college, one graduated now and another one about to be in high school, I got more time on my hands now and I'm actually, I don't tra, I'm not a traveling superintendent anymore. I work right here, most of my time here now spent between Atlanta-Hartsville International Airport and within the two eighty-five perimeter. So I have, I have time to devote and be a effective representative of a district. That's why I decided to do this now. Hopefully, I answered your question, Ms. Harvey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Phyllis Reed, you have the floor, please unmute your mic.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, hello, thank you, thank you for this, oh, for, much appreciated. My question is pertaining to infrastructure and developers. It's several questions pertaining to this. So candidate Mike Johnson, have you accepted any monies from developers for your campaign?
So Ms. Reed, that's a great question, I have not. I will tell you this, I do know some of these developers, I know some of these developers well and I have not accepted not one thing or dime from them. To be totally honest with you, my campaign has been funded by me so far. I do not anticipate accepting money from anybody who think they could influence my, my decision-making. I can't be bought, I can't be bossed. I would not be in a situation to where I'm held accountable to anybody other than the citizens of this district. And I think that's the only way to be. I don't want to be conflicted and I do not want to be held, held as if, as if I owe someone a favor. That's not gonna happen, that will not happen. As far as the big, huge, and, and I am a builder. I got a son, he's an IBEW electrician, he worked on a data center, right here in Fayetteville, probably the largest in the nation. We build, I'm not against building, but I am against building in residential areas where people are trying to raise their families. I am against building in areas where this type of, it, it doesn't make sense, where the, where the neighbors don't want it. Nothing bothers me more than for a neighbor to look outside their window or come down their street and see a huge development being built and they don't know what it is. They have not been informed or consulted with this particular structure being built in their neighborhood. When I, like I say, I build, I build on a huge scale and everywhere we build, whether it be in Apparita, whether it be on the north side of Atlanta, you better believe every one of those residents is gonna have some say-so as to what you're bringing to their neighborhood. And I, I like that and we have got to get like that here on our side of town. In, in our district, we gonna have to make sure that the residents dictate what will be built in their area. It's just that simple and, and I'm the type of guy that would do that every step of the way. And if anyone, anyone see where I do not do that, then I'll say, hey, send me packing. You know, one thing about District Four, District Four, what I've noticed, they do not mind sending a candidate packing. They do not mind sending a candidate home. If you don't do what they expect you to do, you will go home and they will elect someone else and, and I, I think that's beautiful.
Okay, now, okay, I did catch the part where you said you are a builder. Now, I do have two more questions and you kinda, you kinda answered the second one I'm about to ask, but I still want to ask it. What are your thoughts on development before handling the infrastructure within this city?
What are my thoughts on developing before?
The infrastructure is in place.
Well, the first thing you do when you build, you gotta get a foundation. Your foundation has got to be solid. If you don't build on a solid foundation, your structure will not stand. Now, are you referring directly to the training center?
Well, I'm gonna be honest, I'm here in District Two. The council just approved a complex, apartment complex that's on Campbellton Fulton Industrial and that's also gonna be impacting Cascade Palm Metal. We're here, I'm here in the Falls of Cascade Palms, which is direct, well, almost behind the BP gas station. So there's been several complexes that's been built. I think it's called the Story, which is, I'm not sure if that's townhomes. And then there's the other development, they're, they're not too far from the Publix.
Yes, I'm familiar with that.
Okay, great, so we only have one grocery store in this district, which is sad. But the thing is, is now they're, they've, the council just approved the three hundred and fourteen, or maybe it's more than that, complex as far as apartment buildings and I think they're gonna be three levels, including townhomes and also cottage homes. Now, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Campbellton Row, or I mean Cascade, no, Campbellton, where in the evenings from Fulton Industrial all the way to Camp Creek, you have traffic backed up.
Yes, you do.
So by, so by you being a builder and the developer, if the community and the constituents have said, has, have concerns because of the traffic, because now they're doing all this development, everything and the roads are not being widened, nor is the infrastructure there, meaning the schools and everything else, what are your thoughts as a builder regarding this?
I thought as a builder regarding that, first of all, Ms. Reed, let me just tell you this, I'm very familiar with that. I only live about three minutes from there. I, I, I live out here, I live maybe three minutes from there, I come that way, I see the traffic and it is horrible. I think the infrastructure should have been considered and as a builder, I think, I think the constituents and the neighborhood should have been considered. And there again, when you got people making decisions without consulting with the people in that district, you should send that person packing. I see that that person right now is running for higher office. If, if people are not respecting the people in that district, you must send them packing. As a builder, we cannot build if the people do not allow it in their particular community. Let you pour that up on John's Creek, let you pour it up on, up in Apparita, they will not allow that before they put something that can handle that type of traffic. I agree, we should be looking at infrastructure before we keep jamming the streets. Now, all of that, we should make the builder contribute to that. The builder should be contributing to that.
Okay, gotcha. Now, my last question is, all this to me falls under the infrastructure developers. What are your thoughts on council members traveling abroad and would you be one of those council members going over for the overseas trips?
So my thoughts on traveling abroad all depends on why are you traveling? Now, me personally, I actually have a great job where, when me and my family do travel, we plan our travel several months in advance. But as far as council member traveling, I'm be honest with you, I can't say that I'm totally against that because I don't know their reason for doing it. I don't, I'm not really sure if I don't, I'm not really sure if council members, are they trying to attract business here? I'm not. I can sit here and tell you what you want to hear, and I'm not that type of a guy. I know a lot of people got a problem with that. I've heard that in the past. I would not be the type of council member that would be traveling on a public dime unless, unless it directly involve benefit to the public and the people that voted me in office. That's the only way I would travel on their dime. That's the only way I would take a nickel if the the public would benefit. But if I saw that there was a lot of heartburn, if I saw that there was a lot of conflictedness, if I saw that the appearance of conflict conflictedness was there, I would have a reservation about doing it myself. But I honestly can't speak for some of the other council members because I don't know their business. I don't know why they're traveling. I don't know their real reason. I know we uh, we nine to seven square miles in size. We got a whole lot of green space. I know we are very attractive to a lot of people in a lot of places, and they would love to come here and do business because we're so close to the airport. But we, as the citizens, have got to dictate what type of businesses we bring to our city.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you for answering my questions.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Ms. Lynn Reed, you have the floor. Please unmute your mic.
Okay, hello, Mr. Johnson. Um so my question is, is if elected, what would your first hundred days look like?
If elected, my first hundred days, um if I'm elected and I'd like to go a step further and say when I am elected, my first hundred days would be a whole lot of talking to a whole lot of communities, a whole lot of communities that have felt left out. Before I, Mike Johnson, go and try to make a decision, I would like to know what the people want. I've I've done that a lot, knocking on doors, and I've gotten a good idea of some of the things that people would like to see. And a few of them is nice restaurants, places that we don't have to leave, that we could take our family without having to go spend our money in St. Douglasville or Fayetteville. But my first hundred days would really heavily depend on what the people want. It 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 would not be a whole lot of I, 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 it would be a lot of we, us, and our. It would be basically what the people want. I mean, a open door. Every week, I would be trying to talk to somebody in a different neighborhood about what you think is good for the area. What's the, what's the best path that trying to make this happen? I'm 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 really, uh I I build for a living, and I can tell you, sitting at a table with a bunch of builders, you get a lot of eagles in the room. But even the biggest eagle in the room have to sit down sometime and listen to everybody around him. Because collectively, you could do a whole lot more when you got different ideas coming to the table.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, for those that have just joined, if you would like to ask the candidate Michael Johnson a question, please use the reaction button, raise your hand, and we will acknowledge you. Now, there is a question from the, from the chat that says, if elected, how will you handle the bullet, the bullying during council meetings?
I tell you what, that's a good question. There is some bullying going on at council meeting. First of all, I think you you heard me say it before, consensus, consistency, what they call group buy-in. It it doesn't mean that everybody agree on the same thing. It just mean that everybody colle- collectively agree on something. I said it quite well tonight, you're not always going to win. It's got to be give and take. The bullying that I've noticed, you just got to confront a bully head on. You got to deal with facts as they are. But the bullying, you got to maintain decorum. You got to maintain respect for the position and respect for the office. But I think bullying have to be dealt with collectively amongst the other members. Someone just have to let the bully know that this will not be tolerated amongst this board. I wouldn't give in to it if if you asking me that. Uh I wouldn't give in to it. I wouldn't be intimidated. I think the bully know that. That's why the bully backs my candidate, right, backs my opponent right now.
Thank you so much for that. Now, in terms, in terms of bullying, we see this play out a lot in the council meetings. So um do do you think that the Coram ordinance that they recently passed, should that, should that be enforced better? Or what were your thoughts on enforcing that?
I'm sorry, ask me that one more time, please.
All right, so so um we have a, we have a um, we have a policy called the Coram ordinance.
The Coram.
Do you think that should be, do you think that um the enforcement should only be with the mayor? Or should it be with um everyone serving on the council? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I do have thoughts on that. I think that the Coram order should be with every single elected official up there. Every single elected official up there. I'm talking about from body language to the rude comments, to the sneering, the jeering. I mean, if you look back at some of those council meetings, and I've looked back at those council meeting, I don't know if some of those guys think they're doing something honorable. But when I have young female asking me about people and the way they carry themselves, uh facial expression, I just think the core should be maintained and kept across the board. It should be it should be applied to every single elected official up there. The core should always be kept. Adults and elected officials should be able to agree to disagree and still have mutual respect for one another once, once you leave there. We all got families. We all got kids. We all got spouses. No one signs up for that type of bullying and disrespect that had been displayed in front of everybody for the past few years. Nobody signs up for that.
Thank you so much. Now, for everybody that recently joined, uh if you would like to ask the candidate Michael a question, please feel free to raise your hand, and I will acknowledge you. Use the reaction button. I am checking the chat to see if we have any additional questions. Uh there was a question related to District Four. What are your plans to improve District Four? And and you can be specific.
Well, one thing I'll try to do to improve District Four is make sure that our AG one properties remain AG one. You know, make sure our AG one property is not being rezoned to light industrial. Where you could build these type warehouses and and Amazons and data centers. Uh one, another thing I would do to help improve District Four, I would make it a conscious effort. I would go out my way to have a relationship with neighboring cities such as Palmetto, Chattahoochee Hills, Union City, and Fayetteville. I think once you reach across the aisle, we could probably come to some type of consensus that makes sense for them and also makes sense for us and our residents. I'm fully aware that some of this stuff that we're being hammered with are coming from our neighboring cities. I'm aware of that. But I think if, if the, if the representative would put a real effort, put forth real effort, I mean, go out your way to try to establish a a respectable relationship, maybe we can just slow some of this down and get more what would benefit the both of us. And I'm talking about the the cities and the districts. That's what I would do to try to improve it. But I would definitely still there. Again, I would go and talk to each community. I would not just talk to the community in which I live in. I would make a point, every single HOA within District Four will have my direct number, would be able to contact me directly. I don't have a problem with coming every single meeting or every single other meeting. I got to divide my time. But to speak to the different residents as to what their real concerns are, what issues bothers them the most, and address it and attack it like that.
Thank you so much for that. And before we get to Ms. Reed's question, um you have mentioned District Four. Uh do you feel as though some of the dis- do you feel as though we have seven different di- districts with eight different mayors? Uh how, what I've heard, I heard a lot of residents feel that way. What are your thoughts on that?
Uh my thoughts on that is exactly what you've heard. We got seven different councils, seven different districts that operate like seven different cities. Sometimes that ego can get the best of you. I think uh, and I'm not attacking any of the other council members, but I do think that each district need to know that we are a district that's governed by a city. And at the end of the day, you really have got to uh know your place, know your role, and play your role. But to sit there and operate as if you're your own individual city, uh I don't think that's good. That that's not good for the city. It's not that may explain why some people have remained on council as long as they have, because they're only they feel only obligated to their district. Me personally, I feel obligated to the district, but I'm also obligated to the city. Because at the end of the day, you got to have four votes before you can even get anything passed. I get that. But I think it need to be a little bit more consistent. I think it need to be a little more group buy-in. I think everybody need to win sometime. Every single district need to be communicating with each other district as to how they could reach across the aisle and and just look like one city instead of eight different cities.
Thank you so much for that. Ms. Phyllis Reed, uh please unmute your mic. You have the floor. Thank you.
Okay, hi, hello, can you guys hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, great. Now, uh we just know that the council just passed um where
We're gonna be getting a new police headquarters, which I don't have a problem with, because I believe in safety across the city. Uh what are your thoughts about the satellite offices? Should we keep them or should they uh remove them?
Well, I'm with you, Ms. Reed. I think we do need a police headquarters. They voted to do that, and and I'm, if I was on council, I would have elected to do that as well. And for the satellite officers goes, I think um at the end of the day, I I I do believe the police chief, once you got police chief that really, you know, respecting their subordinates and and respecting the will of the people in the city, they will be able to give us data on where satellite offices are needed. You know, it all about what's going on in that area for its crime, for its um incidents, stuff of that nature. I think statistics and the numbers would dictate what a satellite officer would need to be. I would like the arrow on the side of caution when you come to just totally eliminating the different offices without looking at the numbers. You know, you you don't want to move a satellite officer out of an area that's have potential for high crime or 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 high drug area or high human trafficking area. You 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 just don't want to do that. I think you should keep police present as much as possible. I think it need to be done smart. I think it need to be done with the citizen every step of the way. I think the citizens need to still have input in that. It there need to be conversation with the citizens. Because at the end of the day, it's the citizen's money that's being spent.
Thank you so much. Our next question comes from Brandon. Brandon, please unmute your mic. You have the floor.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
I hear you.
I hear you.
Hey, um Mr. Johnson, I first want to say thank you for um, you know, coming on to this this platform. And not only that, but being able to step foot in the arena as running for um city office or city council. I know that's not an easy um step to take, and I know it probably took a lot of decisions in prayer to get into this arena with the city of South Fulton. So I want to thank you for taking your time and your service for um, you know, even considering running for office. And I also want to thank Rashad and the um South Fulton Coalition for hosting this forum as well for residents. Um I often don't be, I'm not often able to speak a lot, so I'm glad that we was able to have this platform here to speak on. But I do have a question for you, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
One, if you um, one, with you being in District Four, uh and uh District Four has seen, has not seen a lot of development over the years since we've been incorporated into the city of South Fulton. Um would you be against our four major development? And what solutions would you offer to address housing affordability to prevent younger families from being priced out?
Hey, Mr. Brandon, that's a good question. Uh and and you're absolutely right. We do, we we probably have the biggest massive land in this, in the, in the entire city. We probably got more green space and undeveloped land out here. You're right. Uh like I say, I sit on quite a few acres myself. Uh I like, I like all the acres I got. I I really my neighbors, they got thirty next door. They they, where where I'm sitting at, they kind of like it being rural. They got horses, the chickens, the cows. They don't want a whole lot of small houses right here. But I do think there are room for affordable housing in District Four. There are room for smaller houses and affordable houses for young people. I mean, I got a daughter just just graduated uh from Kennesaw State uh May. She's looking to build her home right now. Um I got another daughter, she's in her second year at Kennesaw. I got a son in his third year of Georgia State. Each one of those kids of mine are looking to build affordable homes. So I feel where you're coming from when you say that. So um I I truly support that. But there again, I do think it need to be done right. I think the construction piece need to be done right, and it need to be consulted right. I don't know if you're familiar, if you in District Four, you'll be very familiar with, say, Buttonah Road and Ridge Road and uh Ca- uh Campbellton Fayetteville Road where Lee Jordan is at. If if, I don't know if you've been in those neighborhoods or not, but it the the one that's gated, those are two million dollar homes over there. You wouldn't build small affordable homes right there in that particular area because it just wouldn't fit. But if you go right around the corner, you got some undeveloped land where that may fit perfect. I just think it's still to come down to a conversation. I would truly support that. And I would even be um be as, I would even be on board with even speaking with the HOA presidents and the people in that area and show them where it benefits everybody to uh put affordable homes so we can keep some of our family members in the area who love the area, grew up in the area, and would like to stay here in the area and lea- and keep some of that talent here locally.
Uh thank, thank you for that question. Um because I I did grow up in here in the city of South Fulton, and I I do understand that there isn't a lot of housing for younger people like myself to um get in because the houses, the housing market is like within the four hundred thousand, five hundred thousands. And you know, as someone that doesn't make as much money to support, you know, a household that big, we would need some type of development that grows and to, you know, affordability for younger people. Um especially after you're ready to graduate from college and wanting to come back and stay in the city of South Fulton. So if you are for growth and development, you know, I I think that's a great piece to keep in mind when we're looking at a future candidate for the city of South Fulton.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brandon, I appreciate it. That's a great question. I I let let me, let me add this to, let me add this to uh to that. And like I say, I own multiple property here in South Fulton. We was calling, my my other piece of property used to be College Park, unincorporated College Park, but there's all South Fulton now. I was HOA president years ago. Let 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 me tell you what we done over there. A particular build, I won't get into naming names, but a particular builder wanted to build some affordable homes close to where my, to close to my area, my old area where I used to live. Now, what they done, what we done collectively, myself and some other HOA presidents, we demanded, we allow, we dictated what came near us, but we demanded that that particular builder do something for the area. So the the builder that's coming here building these big high-end homes, it's not beyond us to pitch. They could build low, lower houses for lower income as well. That could be done. But somebody got to have the conversation. The conversation got to be had. Somebody got to sit down and just have a conversation. So, you know, as far as infrastructure goes, you know, I think anytime they here building a high-end home, I think they need to also, every time they build something in this area, it it need to be something here that going to benefit the community even after they're gone. It need to, you you don't come here and just suck all the money and the blood out of this area, then you leave and go back to your comfortable cozy area. And the people here who's been here, I'm talking about your legacy people that's been here don't benefit. I'm talking about parks. I'm talking about sidewalks. You come here and build, and if Mike Johnson's involved in it, I can guarantee you the people going to know you came here because you going to leave it better than you came.
Thank you for that. And and I appreciate you for saying that, because I I know for sure that um at least one current council member on um one current council member on, um, the current council did work with a lot of different organizations and developers to make sure that we had, you know, those things in our development when they're approving developments. So I just wanted to say thank you for your support in that as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question, Mr. Brandon.
All right.
Yeah, thank you for that as well. Uh, we have two questions from the chat. So the first question is, what is your take on the public comments issue?
My take on the public comment issue, I think, um, I'm gonna be totally honest with you. I think the public should be able to speak their heart. I think they need to be respectable about it. But I think the public should be able to speak their heart. It's kind of tough to get it all in in two minutes. And I know some of the people that support me probably don't like me saying this, but I think as a taxpayer citizen, I think a taxpayer citizens should be able to speak truths to power. That just, if I have an issue with something, and if it took me four minutes to get it out, I think I should be allowed to get it out in four minutes. If I say something that you don't like, you have to be a representative. I think you need to get some thick skin. You need to be able to deal with it. Now, I'm not saying being called out of your name. I'm not saying just outright blatant lies. I'm saying speak your mind, speak it intelligently, respectfully, but I think you should be able to state your piece. That's, that's my take on that. I don't think people should be censored. Is if you've asked, if if I hope I answered that question. I I don't think people should be censored. I think they should be able to speak and ask the questions. Take myself an instance. When I'm elected, I'm sure it's gonna be somebody that do not like something, a decision that I make, but I'm gonna have facts and data to show you that this particular neighborhood, this particular neighborhood, this particular neighborhood, they all wanted it. And if I got ninety-eight people want something and two people don't, I'm gonna go with the ninety-eight people. But I think the two people that didn't want it, I don't think they should be, I don't think their voice should be drowned out where they can't be heard. I think they still should be able to voice their concern. I think they still should be able to come and say, hey, Mike, I don't like what you done. And this is why I don't like it. And I need to be able to sit there with enough intelligence and I need with with enough the the quorum. And I need to be able to listen to it, but I also need to have the opportunity to respond and let those two people know that the other ninety-eight people wanted this particular deal that I voted on.
Thank you so much for that. Now, um, the next question, um, is not sure, hold on one second. I'm just gonna read it. Not sure if the question has been asked, but what will be done to ensure a traffic light is added at the intersection of Wilkinson Mill and Highway twenty-nine?
Okay, Wilkinson Mill and Highway twenty-nine. Okay, let let me be totally honest with you. I don't, this is the first time I've heard that question, but I will tell you this. Wilkinson Mill and Highway twenty-nine, those are not local roads. What I would do if 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 there's an issue there at Wilkinson Mill and Highway twenty-nine, I'm if if my, I'm I'm trying to think of that area. That's the area where the huge post office has just been, um, the big hub, the big U- United States Postal Service hub is that? That area is a, um, I want to say it's a state road. One person on council will not be able to fix that problem. I can tell you that right now. If the residents and everybody in that area saw that there was a need for a light and we had enough support for a light, it would be some serious lobbying going on at the state level. And I will tell you right now, if that is District Four and not Palmetto and not another city, I have no problem with taking that question to the next level. I have no issues with that.
Thank you so much. Now, we have five minutes before this call is scheduled to end. Uh, so you can just wrap up, give us your closing remarks regarding your campaign. Let us know some of your campaign events that you have and um, anything else that we should know about the Mike Johnson campaign.
All right. Be- before we do that, if if people have more questions, I did allocate another thirty minutes. As if you asked me to. So I'm not in a hurry to get off. Any any question, yeah, any any question anybody got, I'm I'm telling you, I'm I'm here for the people. Uh, hey, ask. So this, I I like this forum. I like this style of forum. And let people just ask straight out what they wanna ask and not being reinterpreted and not being, um, misread because they asked me directly and I haven't a chance to respond directly. So if you need another thirty minutes before we wrap it up, hey, if you need another hour, I'm here. I've allocated this time just for the people to ask the question in District Four or any District Four, if that matter go.
Thank you so much for that. So since you have a little bit more time, uh, have you had an opportunity to review the agenda for for the upcoming council meeting?
I have not.
All right. So one of the items on the agenda is, you you already addressed it about the public comments, but another item on there is about the, there's a, um, there's a veto on there from the mayor. So, um, as you know, the about a hundred percent of his vetoes have been overturned. What do you think about the the veto authority of the mayor? And should there be community oversight over the council's actions as it relates to overturning vetoes?
I think there should be, uh, community oversight for the council overturning a veto. I think there should be community oversight, and I'm gonna tell you why. The reason I believe there should be community oversight is because from what I've seen from this particular council here, this particular council here, I have seen this particular council be kind of vindictive and make some, make some decisions that I totally looked at and asked, why did they do that? It was, it it looked as if they made some of the decision they made was based on personal reasons. It weren't based on business. It weren't based on, on, um, the community or what the public wanted. That's just my thoughts on that. Uh, but I do think the community should have, uh, some input. I think everything an electric fish should do, I think the community should always have input.
Thank you for that. Now, just for, just for transparency, the veto that I was referring to is regarding the, there's a contract with, uh, I'm looking for it now, Confidential Services LLC for a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. This is, this is for the investigation into the South Fulton Police Department. So do you think there's a policy basis for this veto or what were your thoughts on that?
What's the name of the company?
The the name of the company is called, um, Rothwell Confidential Services. And it says, uh, for the purposes of conducting an administrative review of the South Fulton Police Department per the council initiated investigation for an amount not to exceed a hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars. A hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred twenty-five.
Okay.
So do you think there's a policy basis for the, for this veto?
I'm gonna be honest with you. I really don't know if there's a policy basis for that particular veto. But one thing I would be concerned about with this is who is Rothwell? Does this particular company have any ties? I would be very, very concerned about any particular company investigating the police department and their history. I'll, I would have reservations if they was conflicted in any way, form or fashion, any way, form or fashion. That would be my thought on that. If if, um, but to answer your question, is it policy driven?
No, the question was, do you know if there's a policy basis for the veto?
I don't know that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know that. I I was not even familiar with the veto. Well, I I'm, I I don't know if there's a positive basis for that particular veto. I don't know. I I don't even know who Rothwell is. I never heard of it. But I do, I do think the department do need to be investigated. I do think that I support an investigation one hundred and ten percent, but I do feel like whomever doing this investigation need to come in there with absolutely no ties whatsoever to the city, to the department, uh, anyone within the department. It, they need to be one hundred percent neutral. Neutral because if not, the men and women that put that uniform on are gonna feel as if they're not getting their fair shake. Cuz from what I understand here, that smarter police did an investigation a while back. There was a lot of recommendations made, and a lot of recommendations made. And when I look back, have any of those recommendations ever been implemented? Any of them? Have any one of them been implemented? And when I see a police department that thumbs their nose up, when I see a police chief that thumbs their nose up at a real investigation and don't try to adhere to not one single recommendation, we got a serious problem. And that can possibly happen again. So I think we had need to have real teeth into this investigation. Real teeth, real strength.
So thanks. Yeah, thank you so much for addressing that. Now, just for the audience, since, uh, Mr. Johnson has more time, uh, if you would like to ask a question, please use the reaction button, raise your hand, and I will remove you off of mute. Now, Ms. Harvey, you had your hand raised earlier. Did you still have a question?
Guess not.
Uh, sorry about that. I had to, um, go outside there. But if, one que- one question I wanted to ask, um, Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Uh, District Four, now that's a demographic uh, out there, uh, a lot of people have these four and five hundred thousand dollar homes and two, two million dollar homes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Uh, you said, you stated that there is a, an area where you would support, um, a quote-unquote affordable housing. Um, and my question is this, what is affordable housing? Um, or your definition of affordable housing? Um, if you are going to support building affordable housing near an area with four and five and hu- hundred thousand dollar homes? And, um, yeah, I would just wanted to know, uh, what is affordable housing?
Okay, so, uh, good quick, good follow-up question, Ms. Harvey. Um, I'm gonna try to answer your question the best I can. Now, Mr. Brandon, I think that's a gentleman named that asked about that particular question.
Right.
And, uh, basically what he asked was, he he live in the area, he would like to remain living in the area. Him being a, I I don't know if he's a recent graduate or not, but basically, they're priced out. Now, I did make a statement saying that that would not be a good place to put him up on the two million dollar and the six hundred thousand dollar homes. I made that clear. That's, that do not make sense. I would not support that. In case you didn't hear me say that, I will not support that. I mean, I just wouldn't support, it don't make sense. But there are areas out here that are, that is undeveloped, that are undeveloped, totally undeveloped. There are raw land out here. There are some areas out here. But even with that being said, it's a conversation that will, that will be had with the residents in that particular area. When it come down to building homes that are affordable. And my definition of affordable homes would be something less than yet, two million dollar homes. Affordable home is really what a person can afford that works in the jobs that making, say, less than a hundred thousand dollars a year. You know, that's will probably be what you would consider more affordable homes. Um, it's not a real definition of a, uh, I mean, you get a person to make a million dollars a year, affordable home is what he can afford to purchase. But I think when people now use the term affordable homes, they talk about homes that range in anywhere between two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. I'm thinking those are probably what they consider affordable homes. Not your million dollar or your eight hundred thousand dollar homes.
So I, I have heard people, um, compare affordable homes to attainable housing. So what what is your, what are your thoughts on attainable housing versus affordable homes? Are they mutually exclusive? Are they different? What are your thoughts on that?
What type of home did you, I I didn't hear?
Attainable housing.
Attainable?
Yes.
You said A T, attainable?
Yes.
And what are my thoughts on, you mean like building those in the city?
Yes.
I think, um, I'm gonna be totally honest with you. I will support whatever the residents wanna support. You know, I I just think there again, and I'm gonna use Lee Jordan since I live right here by Lee Jordan. Um, I wouldn't recommend doing that near those million dollar homes. I wouldn't recommend building those up on an eight hundred thousand dollar home. I wouldn't support that, but I do support, um, some attainable or affordable home being built in the city. I do support that. But I think we need to be strategic and smart about the way we go about doing it. We just need to look at the areas where those homes fit, get the community involved, get feedback from, uh, the residents that's gonna immediately affect. That's my thoughts on that. I think no matter what you build it, I think, and and that's something I learned in going through the training of, um, zoning and the, um, zoning training that we went through here in the city. You need to consult with the people immediately neighboring any particular development. Hope I answered that, but I go more in detail if y'all need me to.
Well, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, uh, in District Three, uh, we have a builder or developer uh, that wants to build five, uh, homes in an A G area. It's on Delano, if you know where Delano, uh, Drive is.
I know exactly what Delano Drive is. That's a lone church.
Oh, okay. Uh, well, you know that they have a lot of old houses. Some are dilapidated, boarded up. Um, and, uh, some of those houses are lived in, uh, but it looks like a rundown area.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, now, we have a builder that wants, a developer that wants to build five new homes over there. Um, um, and, um, we we got the plans and, uh, uh, but, uh, the the situation is, um, that whole area needs to be, um, re- 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 uh, needs to have a redo on it because, you know, that area, uh, that wooded area down there where they got those dilapidated homes?
Yes.
Okay, some of those homes have been sitting up there deteriorating for the last fifty years.
Yes.
And, uh, that whole area needs to be redeveloped.
Revitalized.
Revitalize, exactly. And I'm, and, uh, this, uh, developer wants to build five new homes. Uh, and I'm wondering who is going to buy those homes because, uh, they are about three thousand square foot, square footage. Uh, garage, uh, two-story and that sort of thing. And, um, and it's right next door to an apartment, that apartment complex.
So, Ms. Harvey, let 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 me, let me be totally honest with you. I'm very familiar with it. I got family that live down there on the street down about a park and down on Church Street.
Oh, okay.
So I, I know everything about that particular area. I'm familiar with Hickory Park, now called Freedom Park, which is right across the street.
Okay.
All the killings that go on, I'm very familiar with the area. But I will tell you this, I've had a conversation, cuz like I say, I I currently serve on one of the boards here in the city right now. There is a sign up down there for that to be rezoned to do that. I've I've saw that.
Right. She's asking for rezoning.
Yes. Uh, I I I witnessed that. I saw that. I'm a board member now. Like I say, I am a current board member. Every decision that I vote on, I write by each property. Anytime we gonna make a decision. I wish all the board members done that, but I personally do it. I think there is a few other ones that have started doing that. there is a few other ones that have started doing that. And I'll look at the area and see what it is I'm making a decision on. But I'm gonna be totally honest with you. Uh, I asked the neighbors down there and my family members down there, hey, you see what they trying to do over here? A couple of them had pushback. A couple of them supports it. Now, they asked me what I thought. Mike Johnson personal opinion, if you, if, if they had three votes on the board to allow that particular development to happen over there and they needed one more vote to get it done, I would probably give them that vote. And I'm gonna tell you why I would probably give them that vote. Because I happen to know that they wanna build some type of battery plant back there. And that the whole resident, that whole area is up in arms about it.
You mean the East Point Battery? Yeah.
Yeah, but if you go to the end of that street and make a left to the dead end behind the park, that is what they call East Point. They're trying to put a battery plant over there and every single resident over there is, is about to lose their mind because they're gonna bring such toxicity to their immediate area.
You are absolutely right.
So now, what they're thinking is, if they had more nicer homes developed and built over there, maybe they could make a stronger argument in case not to put that type of foolishness right upon their families and their kids. And I, and, and, and so to answer your question, Ms., Ms. Harvey, I, I would be that fourth vote. I would vote for those homes to be built over there because if someone wanna come and invest in a neighborhood and make it look nicer, who knows, you may have a police officer that wanna move over there and, and, and get some discounted living to start bringing that area up to par, you know, because I agree. It's a lot of dilapidated homes over there. But there again, on council, when you got a builder such as myself on there, I'm gonna look at it from, from a different set of eyes, from a realistic point of view. And, and it gotta start somewhere. And that could be the spark to start revitalizing that entire area. I mean, that's a nice, beautiful church.
Well, it's, it's ripe for development. Make no, make no mistake about that.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, and you got that, that church on the corner there, I mean, that, that's like one of the largest churches in, in the city.
It's a beautiful church.
Very beautiful church. And, and I'm sure that church would love to have more parishioners right there in the community.
Uh, exactly. Well, thank you so much for answering that question.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Now, earlier this year, uh, we had some uh, challenges with P cards and travel and things of that nature. Uh, what are your thoughts on the, the council initiated uh, forensic audit on one P card versus all of them? So the mayor's P card got the forensic audit, but everybody else got the compliance audit. Do you think they all should have had the forensic audit or should they all have a compliance audit? What are your thoughts on that?
My thoughts on that is what good for the goose is good for the gather. I think everyone should have been subjected to the exact same type of audit. I'm gonna say it again, every single person up there that have access to spending with a P card should have been subjected to the exact same scrutiny. It's just that simple.
Let me stop you. So when you say everyone, do you mean just the elected officials or everyone that has a P card?
There are fifteen departments throughout the city. Everything that I've noticed, everything that I've heard and I have attended, I can tell you how many meetings I've attended. Council meeting after council meeting, listening to it. And if I haven't attended them physically, I watched them online. I have witnessed and I've come to know is fifteen different departments within the city. And every single department has been in violation of some form or fashion, one way or another. Whether it was intentional or unintentional, there has been a violation in every single department of the P card. Some may not be as severe as others. But there has been violations. Now, I am also aware that there have been some checking balances put in place. As far as the, the chain of command, the steps you go through, I think that's a beautiful thing that they're doing that. But I think if you're gonna do a forensic audit on the mayor, I think you should have done a forensic audit and spent the extra dollars. And did a forensic audit on every single P card in the system. That's what I support. I think anytime you are trying to look back at some wrongdoing and you trying to hold someone accountable, I think you should hold everyone accountable.
Thank you for that. Now, just as a reminder for the public, uh, if you'd like to rate, if you'd like to ask our candidate a question, please raise your hand. I see that we have a hand raised. Ms. Reed, you have the floor. Please unmute yourself.
Um, okay, if this was asked before, I apologize, I had to step away. But um, what is your take on the development or the uh, I guess the data centers coming into the city of South Fulton, considering that they are being put close to homes, considering their environmental impacts, noise and everything else that are negative with data centers, the resources that they suck up and the fact that they're telling us that, you know, they have these data centers up north, which I couldn't care less if they do. Uh, but they're trying to tell us it's a good thing and we're trying to tell them, we know we're not idiots. We know it's not. So what is your take on data centers?
Okay, my take on, so let, let, let me just put a disclaimer out there. One of my son work at a data center, the one at QTS, the largest in this, in this area over in Fayetteville. He works there, he's employed there, he's happy with doing what he do. And I'm happy that he's out working himself, so he ain't and to continue getting money for me. So uh, with that being said, I think uh, data centers should be built in the right place. They should not be built in neighborhoods. They should not be built right upon residential homes. They should be built in industrial park areas. Amazons and, and warehouses, things of that nature. They should be built in the right place. I am a builder. I've built several of those myself. But there again, they need to be built in the right area. As far as I'm concerned, I would never, ever vote yes to a data center a warehouse or any other big box structure in a residential area. That, that's, that's a no for me. There's always a no for me. Like I say, I live on several acres myself, quite a few acres. I don't want one next to me. And I know the next person don't. Some of the residents I've spoken to out here in, in uh, district four. Uh, a lot of cities out here, you got some people that have been here for a lot of years, they can't afford to move. They are homesteaded where they're at. They're legacy residents here. And I think those people need to be respected and, and they don't plan on moving. I can't blame them. Cause you can't get as much property nowhere else for the money they can afford. And I would support that. I do not support that. I do not support warehouses, data centers, or, or Amazons or anything else along that line being built in residential areas. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, you did. I mean, considering that, you know, the homes that they've thrown up are around like, you know, there's a lot of homes off of Fulton Industrial. So when you say industrial parks, do you mean like an industrial area like Fulton Industrial, considering there are still, there are a lot of homes that have been built in this area now?
So let, let, let me address that, uh, Ms. Reed. Uh, Ms. Reed, correct? Okay. Ms., Ms. Reed, let, let me address that. Now, I will say this. Now, Fulton Industrial, we know what Fulton Industrial is. Fulton Industrial is just that. Fulton Industrial, it is an industrial corridor. If you happen to see a piece of property over there and you buy a piece of property over there and you build your home over there, you can't get upset because there is an industrial facility right across the street from you because it was there first. Now, yeah, I, I'm, I'm hoping I'm answering that because I do support building. But I don't support building those type of structures in our neighborhoods. Now, if someone choose to go over there and buy a home that's built within that industrial corridor, then I think that person has really you know what you're getting into. You know what you're getting into. That's, that's it almost like me buying a home next to a train track. My, I'll give you a perfect example. My, my, my dad, when we was a kid, we were young, my dad bought, my dad lived in a home that was right next to a train track. And, 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 and they used to complain, I like, as I got older, I got to thinking, how can you complain about the train and you that track was there before you got here?
Well, okay, so I get your point. And the thing is, is that, yeah, a lot of these things have been here before the developers stuck these homes next to these properties. However, they continue to do these, like they're putting developments right behind gas stations, under power lines. So it's like a pattern that continues time after time. They, you know, like when I say data centers, yes, it's, you know, they're, they're building them on an industrial corridor. But they know they have built homes close to these corridors, so why keep putting things like that on these properties elsewhere? So, so are you saying that you're not for them to continue building, even though it's a corridor, industrial corridor? Or what is your point there?
Okay, so my, my point of Ms. Reed is this. Let, let me just say this, and, and I'm, I'm gonna shoot it straight to you, you know, whether I, I don't know if you noticed or not, like, when you ask me something, I may not respond exactly the way you hope I would. You know, like, I, I'm not a, a, a
I don't have hopes. I want you to be honest.
Right. And that's what I'm trying to do right now.
I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and, but I, but I won't at least state to you exactly my, why I'm taking this position is that yeah, I won't sit here and tell you something just to appease you. I won't do that for anybody. I will always be straight, honest about my decision making when it comes to the public and public dollars, one hundred percent of the time. Now, I think if you have an existing infrastructure somewhere and someone wants to build something somewhere, if the community that's there say we do not want that, I think the community need to be heard first. It's just that simple. I don't think a council person has the right to override what the community want and vote on something just because they have a right to do it. I think every step of the way that that particular representative have an obligation to the people that put them in office to always honor their wishes first. And, and, and that's about as plain as I can state it. Even though that may be an industrial corridor over there. But if you got residents that's in that area, or you got homes that have surrounded a particular area, if that particular building could not come to a, what I keep going back to, a consensus, a group buy-in and give those residents enough give and take to where they say, hey, I don't have a problem with that, then I, I can't, I can't support it. I cannot go against the people that put me in office. It's just that simple. I gotta respect the residents.
Yeah, I, you know, I just wanna say that um, you know, there needs to be a little more transparency on the things that are already existing in these areas like I think there was a steraginics no one knew about. Uh, well, no, it's one somewhere in city of South Fulton, I believe. Um, and the other one was, I think, in Cobb County. But I think the point is, is that, you know, people come, they see that these big, beautiful homes and they don't understand, you know, what's, what, what they're, you know, buying into. And I was the same way. I'm not originally from Georgia. I'm from the Midwest and they did not put these types of things near our neighborhood. So that's why it was I was ignorant when I came to Georgia buying a home near, you know, an industrial corridor or near power lines that ran everywhere. So, so again, I mean, I, I don't know what can be solved by this, maybe being more transparent on what's being built in our city and, and getting that education out. But I'm just kind of been here. But I appreciate your response and you did.
Yes, so let, let me, let me address that piece real quick and, 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 I mean, but you should be able to vent. I mean, whoever you entrust your vote to, they should at least have a little time to listen to what you're saying because there probably other residents that feel the exact same way. But one thing I can say is, I would be the type of uh, council person that would try to do something to foster more involvement with the people, like you know, it's a lot of people that don't know what's going on. And like you said, transparency piece. There's a lot of this stuff that could get out to the public if avenues were there. Now, I do wanna say this and give each one of those council members that's sitting on, on the board now. I'm sure, I, I know all of them got newsletters that they send out, and I'm sure they got avenues as to how they communicate with their constituents. I'm sure they do, you know, and I given the benefit of some of the other residents doubt, they have a way. But sometimes you had to meet people where they are, you know. You, you gotta create more ways at getting people involved. You got to be, that's just me. I, I would be a little, little non-traditional. I would be trying to figure out any way to get you involved so you would know, you know, as to what it is being built uh, uh, proposing being built in your area. Yeah, and that's just me. I'm just that type of individual. I, I, I'm always gonna be a people's guy. Whatever the constituents want, that's what we're gonna do. It would never be Mike Johnson want something totally against what the other uh, hundred and uh, I mean, the other fifteen thousand residents don't want.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I get you. And we as a people need to do better, cause I'm not even in district four. And you see how many people are even on this forum to hear what you are about. You know, it's, it's sad. It's sad that unless it's knocking at their front door, they don't get involved. So again, I'm just funny and I will stand down.
Yeah, that's fine, Ms. Reed. Even though you're not in district four, I welcome your questions because you either probably related to somebody in district four or you know somebody in district four. And uh, and, and maybe, you know, they're not on, on here now, but they may respect your point of view. They may respect your, your decision making and, and don't know who to vote for. And what I hope is, you will go and tell them, hey, you, you had a direct conversation with me and, and if you like something that you heard, you know, that you would encourage them to support, you know, go to, go to electmikejohnson.com and, and donate a dollar to, cause like someone asked me earlier, have I accepted any money from any of the builders? I have not. I have not. I have not accepted that one dime from a builder. I have not accepted, cause I'm not gonna be indebted. I'm only gonna be indebted to the people that elect me to be in office.
And even though we're not in your district, whatever vote you all take to the council still impact packs the city overall. I will stand down, cause I know there's other questions. Your uh, response, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your question.
Thank you. And we're gonna go to the next question. Pamela Harvey, you have the floor. Now, be- before you begin, Ms. Harvey, Mr. Johnson, you can stay on a little bit longer, right?
We're good. I'm gonna stay on as long as, I'm gonna stay on until people get tired of asking questions.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Harvey, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and I'll be brief. The, Ms. Reed, uh, one thing I want to address, Ms. Reed, uh, as well as Mr. Johnson uh, about these data centers. On um, Mason Road, uh, they wanna put a data center down there. Basically, it's just a wooded area and a few homes and Lake Francis is across the street. Now, those parcels are privately owned, uh, minus uh, Georgia Power, who owns a lot of parcels over there. So naturally, they wanna put that data center down there. Now, the homes that are down there are basically rentals. So uh, they, the people that are renting those houses down there are gonna have to move one way or the other because the, the, the uh, uh, parcels that they are on uh, is privately owned. Now, a lot of the people, when we went to the meeting, uh, there were quite a few people that didn't want it down there, but it didn't make any difference because if push come to shove, if uh, city of South Fulton was gonna give them a hard time, they were, the, the private owners were gonna try to re annex their property over to Union City. And uh, we, they, the uh, councilwoman Willis uh, didn't wanna you uh, uh, lose that revenue uh, from these people because then if it goes to Union City, they will get the revenue from the data center. So uh, also you got, Lake Francis is over there and that's also privately owned. So um, you got, gotta understand that that Roosevelt Highway is that trying to convert it into a fully industrialized area. And uh, no, I don't like data centers neither, but there again, the, the land is privately owned and they get to dictate what they, they want to do with it. If we didn't go along with this, then they, they were gonna re annex to Union City. And oh, by the way, uh, Fayetteville just uh, uh, And oh, by the way, uh, Fayetteville just uh uh built built a uh huge data center and it's in the back of People's uh Horse Ranches in um in Fayetteville and uh they don't like it, but they had no choice because the council voted for it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that input.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Mr. Brandon Eads, you have the floor. Please unmute your mic.
Oh, yes. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, cool. So Mr. Johnson, um, as a candidate as well, um, for the city of South Fulton, if a decision was um, so if you had a decision to make between two different parties in a community, um, say for instance, say for instance, one community feels strongly about a particular project that's being built or another party is feeling another way and um, you know, one party wants it, another party doesn't want it. How would you ensure fairness while still moving the city forward?
A good question, Mr. Brandon. The way I would ensure fairness is, we will have a town hall. We will get the people that's directly affected by this. I think the people that are directly affected need to be at the table, part of the conversation, all the time. Once you got the people that's directly affected by this and everybody had made their points, their pros and their cons, their for and their against, at that point, then you make a a educated decision based on the information you get from the people involved. You know, but Mr. Brandon, the word consensus, I keep using that word consensus. Consensus, i- if if you look it up, what consensus is, is group buy-in. Is group buy-in. I've been a superintendent since two thousand and eight. But before I was a superintendent, I was a general foreman. And before I was a general foreman, I was a foreman. And building these different structures, I mean, I I managed to get two hundred and fifty guys under me at one time before. Now, when you building these big multi-million dollar structures and you dealing with this many people, everybody got a different idea about doing something. And if you wanna see some egotistic people, you get with you some construction builders. They are egotistic as you can possibly be because everybody wanna be right. Everybody want their idea hurt. But what you gotta remember is when you're dealing with a consensus, that mean everybody kinda take a little bit away from it. And that's basically what I would continue to promote is that consistent group buy-in. I would definitely try to see what everybody could try to win. And 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 at the end of the day, sometimes hard decisions have to be made. You gotta make hard decisions sometime that's gonna piss off some other people, but you gotta make that decision and you gotta do it uh fairly, and you gotta do it in a way that no one feel as if they both were not hurt. Hope I answered your question. Mr. Brandon.
Uh, yes, sorry. I I was trying to get off from you. Um, and yet I do have a follow-up with that. Like Ms. Phyllis said in the comments as well. Um, you know, a lot of people don't, you know, really just don't show up to town halls, like, you know, we, you can definitely post them as much as you want, but um, people, the truth of the matter is people really don't show up. So with that same question, like, how would you balance that with people not having um, coming to these, coming to town halls are trying to let you know exactly how they feel about a particular development, other than the people that have said no and people have said um, they do want it?
Mr. Brandon, you have to meet people where they at sometime. You know, like, I live in the community. I shop in the community. I get my gas in the community. So it's like, um, you know, like right now, I'm always in and out of the community. It, all you could do is all you can do. Once you send out these different um invitations to come to these different events where people are trying to give more information about a particular development that may be coming to the area. You would like to think and hope that somebody in the neighborhood communicate with the next neighbor and that neighbor could communicate with another neighbor. I mean, but I'm open for suggestions, especially with the the younger generation. My daughter come with me um, from a debate we had the other day and she said, hey, Dad, you know, you you spoke on something. She said, but you know, she's twenty-three. She said, I really didn't get that. She said, I, she said, I got it because I know who you are, but she said, but if I, if 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 I didn't just know who you are, I I wouldn't have gotten the whole gist of what you were saying. So you need to try to do it like this. You need to try to do it like that. Actually, they got me a uh, a uh, a Instagram and a Facebook, so that'll probably be attached to my website this upcoming week, but it's because of her. So I would try every avenue that's out there and I would listen to my, my younger generation too as far as trying to reach people.
Right. And so so but overall, you can agree that it's not a easy decision to make and it's a very hard particular situation that people in a position as a council member could be in.
I totally agree with that. Anytime you you make a decision that's uh in that's affecting other people's lives, it could be extremely difficult. But I'm gonna tell you, when you run for office and you wanna sit in them seats, you need to have the heart and the guts to do the right thing, to do the right thing, even when nobody is looking. You need to always be able to do the right thing and make the right decision. And and you always gonna get it right? Probably not. But you need to try to strive for perfection as much as you possibly can when you dealing with other people's lives and other people's money.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. Now, there's there's uh two questions in the chat. The first question is, do you have a choice in the up in the upcoming mayor's election?
I do have a choice. I do have a choice. I rather not say. I mean, I got a top two choices. Uh, I do have a choice still.
All right. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I have a choice. And the reason why I would hate to just make that choice publicly known right here on this forum is because I don't wanna alienate myself with some other people within the city that may have a different choice. I think all nine of those candidates that's running for office right now, I think they have a uh, they all got a job to do, to do a lot of convincing people that they are the right person for the job. And, you know, we got some good candidates there and and, you know, I do have a choice still. Yes.
Thank you for that. Now, the second question, I'm just gonna read it. Didn't our first mayor help put warehouses and data centers in South Fulton?
Okay.
Do you have a response on that?
I do have a response on that. You asked the right guy. I very, very much so believe that and know that to be true. Our first mayor was Kennedy de facto mayor, when he was the commissioner. I think we was um District Five. Um, Ms. Emma Donnell, whom I love to death, came and unseated our first mayor. Um, but to answer your question in a that's correct. The first mayor was very, very, very much so instrumental into a lot of this infrastructure that's here in South Fulton right now. Yes.
All right, thank you for that. Now, there are no further questions from the audience. Um, Mr. Johnson, you could go into your closing remarks and let people know about how to reach you and what's going, uh, uh, any new events or upcoming events for your campaign.
All right, um.
Give a plug about the upcoming city council meeting if you can.
I'm sorry, ask me that one more time.
About the upcoming city council meeting if you can.
Uh, I'm gonna be at the upcoming city council meeting. I think tomorrow night, they 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 is sooner than than normal, but what I was gonna do is make sure people could go to electmikejohnson.com. That's E L E C T M I K E J O H N S O N dot com. That's my web address. It tells you a little bit more about who I am and what I represent. Um, I'm gonna even give my number here. Hold on a second. I'm 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 gonna give you my, my 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 campaign number that if if anybody wanted to reach out directly to me, I I I don't have an issue with it. It's four zero four nine six seven two four two five. It's four zero four nine six seven two four two five. That's my direct number. My email address is uh, electmikejohnsonone@gmail.com. That's elect, E L E C T, Mike, M I K E, Johnson, J O H N S O N, the number one at gmail dot com. Anybody got a question? Hey, I could be reached through either one of those um, those ways right there. And I mean, if you like to volunteer with the campaign, you like to donate, I you know, I could use help, local good help from the residents, people that I'm gonna truly be indebted to. Uh, I accept that. Uh, but I intend on being a guy that's gonna be reachable, approachable. And, you know, a guy that we can agree to disagree on certain things, but you will have a guy with a strong back that will not be bullied or pushed around and do something that's not in the best interest of the citizen of District Four or the citizens of this entire city for as that matter go. You will not get my vote just because you voted on some other crap. I will not be trading votes with anybody up there just to support their crap because they'll support my crap. That's what you see a lot going on sometime and you don't understand why somebody, why someone done something that they done. I won't be that guy. You got my word on that.
Thank you so much for that. And we appreciate you coming out, uh, talking to the residents of the city of South Fulton as well as District Four. Um, as you know, this is uh District Four week for the South Fulton Coalition, so tomorrow evening, we will be hosting your opponent, Mel Keaton. Uh, Wednesday, we will have a council meeting at fifty-four forty Fulton Industrial Boulevard that, and I believe it starts at four o'clock. Um,
I'll be there.
Until whenever. And then um, on Thursday, we have um, the incumbent J C Sebastian. So um, again, thank you, everybody, for coming out and we hope to see you tomorrow evening as we host Mel Keaton.
Thank you, sir.
You have anything else you wanted to add before we wrapped up?
Please go vote for Mike Johnson for District Four. If you don't live in this particular district, uh, call your neighbors, call the people you know live in this district and tell them if they want to preserve what we have going on out here, AG one property, horseback riding, farming and keeping it rural. Mike Johnson is your guy. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And at this time, I will end the recording.